Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Norfolk Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for Wednesday, August 24th, 2022. It's been 7:03. I call the meeting to order. In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General laws, Chapter 38, Section 20, notice is hereby given that the zoning board of appeals will meet on Wednesday tonight at 7:00 PM in Meeting Room 124, One Liberty Lane, Norfolk. Additional public access to this meeting shall be done via Zoom online video conferencing. To join, follow the web link or call the dial-in number. So calling the meeting to order. Our first public hearing tonight is scheduled for 7:00. It's a public, it's an appeal regarding 115 Park Street. I don't know if the appellants here, but if they, if they're here, they're welcome to join us and take a seat at the microphone if they wish.
Have to read into.
Oh, go right ahead and read the notice.
I'll read the notice of hearing. Given in accordance with Chapter 48, the Massachusetts General laws and any and all amendments thereto, the public hearing will be held by the zoning board of appeals in Room 124 at the Norfolk Municipal Building on August 24th to 2022 for the following application. Excuse me if I pronounce it wrong. Desert Family Trust and Miles of Escavating at 7:00 PM for the appeal of the building commissioner, zoning officers' decision in accordance with Massachusetts General law, Chapter 48, Section 8, and the Norfolk zoning bylaws D2C3 located within the residential district. Property is located 115 Park Street, reference accessories map, six, block 44, lot one, in the R3 zoning district.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Identify yourself and we'd be happy to hear from you.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Mic a little too close. Brian Almeida for the appellate, and also with me is Tim Konowitz of Miles of Escavating.
Welcome. So before you get started with your presentation, I saw, I had an opportunity to read your memo, so thank you for submitting that. Thank you for, thank you for responding to the, the notice that you received. I appreciate that. Some people don't, they ignore them, so at least you responded to it. I think in your memorandum, you talked about there may, there may be a, a technical issue relative to notice, whether it was to the owner, the business owner, but I think if you go on the records night, you were stipulating that regardless of that, we're not going to, we're not going to, we're not going to rule on that tonight. You're going to stipulate that notice is notice. You've been notified and we'll go forward with the substantive matter. Is that correct?
Agreed.
Okay, great. Please go right ahead.
I certainly don't mean to reiterate anything that's in the memorandum of if the board had the opportunity to review it. I suppose that the crux of it really is that, at least from the record that's before the board tonight, question falls agricultural exemption. Inspectors cease and dare to establish what level of activity is going on on the property with respect to agriculture and then comparing that to the activity that's being complained of, there's no way to make that analysis, but as the memo argues, and I think that the evidence bears out, and I'm certainly happy to turn the microphone over to Mr. Konowitz to explain further or to answer any questions that the board has. Mentions the cultivation and tilling of soil as part of the agricultural exemption. That's what's happening here, and even if it weren't to fit within the agricultural exemption, it's still incidental to the agricultural use of the property, and therefore it's just simply not within any municipal or state ability to regulate the use of the property in this manner. And I certainly understand, and I think that this board is certainly privy to, because Norfolk is a community where we have farms next to residential properties. I've been before this board on a similar issue with another farm in town that, you know, there was neighborhood opposition to the activity that was occurring on the property. It was incidental to the agricultural use of the property. There is noise associated with farm-related activities. There's dust. There's any number of things that are perhaps not convenient for neighbors, but in the end, the state laws say what they do as to whether or not agriculture is subject to zoning, and in this case, it's not.
Okay. And I certainly will open this up to the, to the town and anybody on Zoom also before, we'll ask a few questions first, though. I did, you made one comment, I believe, on, on the notice of violation, the building commissioner does say, "This operation looks to be separate use from the farm with Miles' construction equipment on site." So I think the crux of the matter is, is, is the material that was, is there or was there, is that from use on the site or is that from use off-site?
Certainly defer to Mr. Konowitz on that matter, but I think at least as far as the information that I was given that goes into the memorandum, I think it's a combination, but I think that what the memorandum is focusing on is the work that was occurring with respect to the agriculture. And I think that's really the crux of the analysis is, if there's any work that's going on on the property that's not directly related to agriculture, is it incidental to the larger use of the property as agricultural as a whole? So I certainly agree with you, Mr. Chairman, that there's certainly a line where if overt commercial activity is happening on an agricultural lot, it moves the scales from incidental to, as opposed to primarily in the form of commercial. But I think in this instance, A, the use is still primarily agricultural, and B, the work that's going on on the property is directly tied to the agriculture. But I'll defer to Mr. Konowitz on that.
Left to hear from you. Thank you.
Just for point of clarification, is the land filed under 61A?
Yes.
It is? Okay.
John Dirge is here tonight, the landowner.
I'm just, just curious.
Go right ahead.
So we bring in material, manure, loom, we compost it. John uses it in the fields as well as we use it. It's, you know, we turn it over. We will complain this year, that was the biggest complaint, because last year with all the rain all summer, we didn't screen hardly anything. When we started screening, we did it for about two weeks straight, and the neighbor that had given me, had come over and spoke to me and everything, was his biggest thing is my wife is working from home now because of COVID. And I said, "I totally understand. I can do this. I've never worked on weekends unless John needs help in the fields, and I've always done it to try to maintain with the neighbors. Yeah, there's dust, there's dust from the tractors picking vegetables, there's dust from us, there's dust from everything." But when we did it for the two weeks, his biggest thing was COVID and his wife works from home now. So I asked him nicely if, when he goes away, I'll do it. If you go on vacation in the summer, we'll stop now and we'll do it when you're gone. We'll do it if your wife goes to work for the day, we'll do it that day. I try to work with everybody I know. I mean, people get upset, and I'm not the kind of person that wants to upset anybody. I will work with anyone. That being said, when Bob came up, there was a pile of gravelly stuff that we had, and then there was loom, the loom pile's still there. We're going to strip the fields this year. It, I guess it doesn't matter which way this goes for that, because it's still agricultural. I'm going to strip the fields and lay that loom down. Whatever's left in that pile's going in the fields, we're going to screen it and put it on the other field. Because we've noticed, last year, the crop was horrible. He does butternut squash for the restaurants around and zucchini and summer squash and tomatoes. The crop was awful. This year, by messing with the manure and aerating it and spreading it out with the doses and having him plow it and letting winter rye grow, the crop's unbelievable. If you went up there now, you wouldn't believe how the plants are beautiful. Actually, John said the plants are the best he's ever had this year.
So all the materials on site that are brought in?
Yep.
Are they used 100% on site?
Nope. It's 50/50. Probably more, probably less than that. It's probably more to the farm than to out of the farm. But we bring manure in, I clean out some horse barns around, and I bring all the manure there, and we compost it. And when you load it on the trucks, there's rocks, people at the farms, you know, they'll dump rocks and stuff in their manure. Well, we screen it out because it will break his, actually, his manure spread has broke several times. We'll screen the manure out so that he can put the manure down on the field without breaking his equipment.
So just so I understand factually, some material comes in, and it's screened or whatever, processed at your location, and then it goes out for another purpose?
Some of it does.
Okay. I'll open it up to the board first before we open it up to the public.
One question is that you mentioned nothing like this was done last year?
Oh, it's been done for 22 years. But last year, I've been there since 2000, and last year, we couldn't because the material had rained constantly, and we could, it just got way too wet. So.
Similar operations have been done in the past.
For 22 years, I've been there doing the same exact thing.
Anything bigger this year than any other year?
Just two weeks of constant screening.
Right, but that's bigger than anything you've ever done before?
Yes.
This was a big operation this?
And we've spread it out. I mean, like, you'll get a little bit and you'll screen it just to keep up with everything and keep the yard clean and everything looking nice. So, yeah, we haven't changed one bit in 22 years.
Leave it for other questions.
David?
Just a question for the owner, who's growing the squash. Dollars and cents-wise, how much money do you make off of Tim and his things versus, because it should be public knowledge, you should be willing to do that, and how much do you make off the agricultural?
Do you mind if I answer that? I trade all the work I do up there for rent, and I pay the taxes on the property. What he makes off me is what he makes off the fields, which I don't know how that's broken down. I know, I've, he explained to me the other day, the seeds, the water lines and everything. I don't know what they make, but we do the, we do all the maintenance up there, everything.
I have a farm. I'm not going to deny it. And we have a law that we have to abide by, and we can't do more than 50% off-farm profits. So if he's not making as much as you're offsetting, then the incidental doesn't matter. So that's, my question is a dollars and cents, because that's really what governs a farm.
So what percentage is really in what?
So what percentage is farm-based dollars and cents coming in versus your offset and/or your even selling of the product that leaves? That's a big difference. And I would venture to say that it's you outweigh what he's making agricultural just because I know what farmers make, for the most part, and he's got 12 acres. It's not all tilled. So I would venture to say that he's, you're benefiting him more than his agriculture. And that's not incidental.
I'm not sure that I am. I don't work his systems at all. I don't think I'm benefiting him more than the agricultural. I don't think.
Monetarily? I would venture to say you are, Tim.
Just to offer a couple of points on that, I think at the very least, it's unclear on this record, but I think more importantly, I just respectfully disagree as to it being simply a dollars and cents analysis just based on the case law that governs this and the statute.
That may be the case, but it does get, it's an interesting argument with respect to what is the principal and what is the accessory use, given the viability of one versus the other. Could you describe your business to me in like three sentences or less, what you do?
What I do for a living?
Yeah.
I install septic systems.
That's not what you're doing with the material on this property, though?
No.
What, I'm just asking, are you making a fertilizer? Are you?
No, we just make loom.
Just loom?
Yep.
And so most of your customers are who buy the?
I don't sell it.
Oh, you don't sell it?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
We sell, we sell no loom.
But it's, but it's part of your finished product of putting in a septic system?
Sometimes it is, and sometimes it isn't. We buy a lot of the loom that we use on the septic systems.
How much material is being moved around on an average year? Cubic yards?
500.
And what is the definition for excavation in the zoning bylaw?
Earth removal?
Earth removal?
It's 500 cubic yards, but we get into agricultural, so that's the, there's an exemption for that.
So, so just realistically, you've got 250 yards of loom. That, if you split it in half, because you said 50/50, 250 yards of loom at $30 a yard adds up quite a bit quickly.
If you can get me $30 a yard, you can be my salesman. It's worth 10, 12 bucks a yard.
Okay, but the, if you go to, if you go to Walpole, you're going to pay 30 from PJ Hayes.
But I don't buy it from PJ Hayes.
I understand that.
I buy it from, like, right now in Bellingham on 126th, there's a gentleman selling loom for $12 a yard. That's what we're using on the septic systems.
Okay.
But let me ask it a little bit different. How is bringing this material on site, processing it, and refurbishing it elsewhere, for whatever you sell it for or barter for, how is that incidental to the farmland?
Well, I think first of all, if I could field that question, I think first of all, Mr. Konowitz, deserve that at the very 50%.
50% have anything to do with?
Well, it's, again, it's being cultivated and tilled on the farm for at least half, if not more than half, of its use being directly on the farm.
So just physically being there?
Well, it's being cultivated and tilled on the property, and that's part of the agricultural exemption, and then it's being used for farming purposes on the property.
And right now, the fields are going down low. Like, if you go up there now, the fields are about this low. We're going to strip them off and rebuild them, because it's, I don't know where the material goes. If it blows away, if it washes away, it's just going away.
So would be your position that any use on that property, 50% or less, because it was on the property, is incidental to farming?
Absolutely not. I think the key here is that it's cultivating and tilling soil, and that's part of the agricultural exemption.
So you, can I just, one more clarification? So part, so part, let's call it a recipe for your loom. Part of the recipe is soil from this farmland?
Yes.
And part of it is products that are brought off-site?
Horse manure, yes.
Horse manure, so on and so forth. Okay. What kind of, what do you do about runoff when it does rain? You just have big piles of manure? What's the health department doing?
He has a, he has a plow, and he furrows the property so the water doesn't run off, and where it did run off, we put all stone.
Okay.
All right. We have two board members on Zoom. I don't know if they can hear us. Before we go to the public, if they have any questions? I just, sorry, Chris, I can't hear you. Hold on.
Hold on, Chris.
I can hear you, Chris.
Okay, we can hear you now, Chris.
Okay, now we can hear you, Chris.
Okay. I have one question to the, to the two gentlemen who are giving this information. One, what is the percentage of the square footage of this property that is, seems to be allocated to doing this commercial grading of materials? And how much is farm?
One out of 13 acres for the cultivation and tilling of soil, and the other 12 strictly for agriculture, says Mr. Konowitz next to me.
Right, and miles of construct, miles of excavation, their, their means of operation generally means they excavate for septic systems and other systems, and they obtain material from that, those, those excavations and bring it to this site for processing?
Yes to the first part of your question, and as to the second, the loom, yes.
So to me, that, that seems to be a commercial operation?
It's the cultivating and tilling of soil on farmland. It's used, and again, even if that's not enough.
My knowledge would say that is a very big stretch of the information that's in the GL 1A. That's stretching it. These guys are not farmers, they are excavation people. Or am I wrong? Are they, are they farmers as well?
No, I think, I think you're incorrect in fairness. I think that Mr. Konowitz has said, and again, that 12 out of the 13 acres are used for farmland, that there's active farming going on on the property, and that this soil that's being cultivated is being used for farm purposes. And I don't think it's a stretch. It's, it's the language of the statute, it's cultivating and tilling soil, and that's what we're doing here.
I don't believe what the operation, from what I understand of the operation, that is not normal agricultural processing.
I can't say that I'm an agricultural expert, but it's cultivating and tilling soil, and that's what's happening here, and at the very least, the building inspector, what he observed is, is nothing more than that, and I certainly, you know, acknowledge that there might be a different view of, of the information being provided, but at least on the information before the board, I don't think there's enough information to determine anything other than that it fits within the agricultural exemption, respectfully.
You believe bringing materials from external sites that miles of excavation people are digging up and putting into trucks and bringing it to the site is not commercial excavation and processing?
Well, how else does any farm get material other than to bring it from outside of the farm?
I have cows.
I think most farms get it already pre-processed.
Well, I think we're talking about more than just manure, in fairness, but I certainly acknowledge that.
My belief would be the, the abudders would not have a problem if this was a manure. But the problem is, is this, is this grading equipment, first of all, it probably doesn't have any dust inhibitors which spray, would be sprayed on it, I'm guessing. So the abudders are getting really concerned about that, though I don't know what the answer to that is.
Well, I think the main answer is that this activity's been going on for 22 years, and there's only been a two-week period where there's been any objection to it. And I think that Mr. Konowitz has explained that that was sort of an aberrant situation that's unlikely to repeat itself.
Do you think it's just because of the extra volume he's been doing, the work?
Specifically for a two-week period because of a specifically rainy year the year before and needing to play catch-up, but beyond that, again, 22 years of activity and, and no complaints.
No, I agree. No, if he's been there that long, it seems that something has changed, as you say. Was the volume of material?
But I think.
I would, it seems it's been a very dry year this year, so I'm, I'm sure that the dust levels have been aggravated by that.
Yep.
Agreed, and I think that the, the good news, at the very least, is that it seems to be an aberrant situation that's unlikely to repeat itself.
Okay. Thanks for those answers. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hi, I'd like, I'd like to say something to one of the board members here.
Go ahead, Josephine.
Okay. I do a little bit, I mean, not to this extent, but I do a little bit of farming, but I'm my, you know, also myself, I'm surrounded by farmers on Seacombe Street. And every year, I, I mean, with all my, even my own little bit of experimenting is a different year. It's a new year. Needs change, we, you know, get different suppliers, we get our soils from other places, we try new strategies, and I mean, there's kind of a conflict. We have the board saying that this doesn't, you know, this is too, too commercial, you know, it doesn't feel like it fits, you know, agricultural, and then we have someone who complained in a two-week period that it may be, you know, you know, it's not, not farming for them, but you know, but, but it may be too much for the person who complains, you know? I'm, I am, I guess, is it something that you, do you do this the same way every year? Or is this year different than last year?
This year's a lot different than previous years because the material was so wet that you couldn't.
Yes.
Screen it last year. It was soft and wet. So this year, it was still wet when we started, and to get it, all the compost screened, it dried out as we were going. So I mean, we did probably, I'd say roughly two weeks screening, and offered to do it on off-times and when people weren't home, and when people went away, and that wasn't good enough, I guess, because that's not what happened.
And then you're saying nights and weekends as well? I mean, how far?
No, the only thing we do on weekends is when John's picking, we'll go out and pick with them. We take one of the front-end loaders and put all the butternut squash in the bucket because mainly it's butternut squash.
Yes.
We'll out and pick squash. He uses little farm tractors every morning to pick the tomatoes, and even, I guess someone said something to him about the dust from his little farm tractor, which really upset him because he doesn't need problems.
I understand. I mean, this is, I mean, if you're respecting nights and weekends, and it sounds like a reasonable operation, I mean, how, how far or how close, rather, is the, the nearest abudder to your operation?
There's one house, I don't know the distance, maybe 100 feet. The rest of them are all pretty distant, but the fields butt the property lines down that side, the butternut fields. And you know how dry it was this year? The wind would blow and it would just carry everything.
And the, and the, but it has concerns, is that the abudder that's about 100 feet?
Yes.
Okay, is the house itself 100 feet away, or is the border 100 feet from your border? Or where, like, where exactly?
I'd say the, rough guess, the house is 100 feet away.
Okay. If you're not doing nights and weekends, and you know, we do have an agricultural history here in Norfolk, you know, so, and some people forget that as time goes on or want to change it when they come here. So just going to put that out there.
Go ahead, Joe. Thank you, Josephine.
Just a clarification, that this is the biggest operation you've done in 22 years? All of a sudden, this is just something very different this year?
It's because it was so wet last year.
Right, but this, you never had to do it this way in 22 years?
Nope.
And you said two weeks' worth of tilling. Did you ever do this much tilling? Are they saying like, this is two weeks' worth?
It was screening.
How often do you till?
It was screening.
Screening of the material.
Right, right.
So it was two weeks of screening. Usually it'll be, you know, we'll pick a day that, you know, a decent day and go in and screen, and there's probably two loads.
Right, so I'm saying it'd be a couple days versus now two weeks?
No, a couple hours. This took us two weeks constant just to try to keep up with it. We actually brought a.
Something unusual to.
We brought a trommel screen in instead of a shaker, and then we trommelled everything because it was so wet.
Right, again, something different than it's been in the past. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to open it up to the public in a second. Rich, I think you mentioned there might have been some correspondence or letters come in from, from abudders or interested parties. If you want to read those into the record, they'll be wonderful.
Sure, yeah. Just pointing clarifications, 5,000 cubic yards, not 500. It was off of zero, just to, for the record.
Two zeros.
Five, 500 is actually not that much.
No, it's not, that's why.
I just wanted to clear the record.
A truck, a truck usually carries 25 yards or thereabouts.
I know. So let's see, there is, let me go back to email.
Do you have another yard that you keep equipment to, or is this the only place you keep equipment?
I keep my equipment parked there. It's way away from everything. It's up in the, like, the Rentham side, but the, the screen is over in that area.
Trips multiple times a day.
The trucks will leave.
Yeah.
In the morning and come back at the end of the day.
End of the day, like, 3:00 in the afternoon.
Bring material in, but we've never worked past 3:00 unless, like, we have an emergency out on a job, like, trucks will come in a little later.
Like usual construction hours?
Yeah. And we don't, my guys don't work weekends, like, we work on the farm with John, like, yesterday, I think it was yesterday or the day before, we pulled the water lines for the butternut, you know, just helping them out.
I mean, I personally, I wish I had somebody like you parked at my place, so. Got stuff to do. I got room, guy.
So the, so in your packet, and we can go through the, pull them up, there's, the abudder at 6 Berry Lane had provided a, in your share folder, so we can go through some of that, if you like.
Sure.
He is online, too.
Okay.
But it provides some extensive videos, photographs, chronology of events in terms of the operation that was there.
So maybe, maybe if that person joins us on Zoom, we can pull those photos or videos up to the best we can.
I'm going to, I want to work backwards in terms of Mr. McCaffrey had sent me an email that he had, had made a complaint, actually going back to 2020. I just want to pull the email up, but we'll screen share, I'm going to screen share in a minute, so. Noted, I just want to get the email, so I can. It's just sorting, sorry. I'll read it, but I'll put it up on the screen, too, for the public, so. That's okay. No, that's fine. No, I tested it. Yeah, it'll work. I just need to get the email. Sorry.
You talking about the 2020 email?
Yeah.
I have it, if you want me to read it.
Go right ahead.
Yeah, if you want to read, then you're reading, I'll put it up on the screen.
It says, "Hello, Rich. I thought you should also be aware of this complaint that I sent to the town two years ago. As a result of this, I had John D. knocking at my front door, stating the town reported to him that he had a problem with his operation. My hope is that this matter of the town enforcing the town laws and everything, he doesn't want this to wind up to be a personal vendetta." It said back here, it said, "Hi, John. The operation is back up and running. I found out that they're trucking in material from Miles Excavation, who does Title V inspections. They dump it, move it, run it through a diesel sifter, reload it, and truck it back out. Sorry to be a pain about this. Just didn't think we bought next to an industrial park." And that was back in July of 2020. "The building department said that I will look into this today and get back to you." And I don't have anything after that. That's all I have.
Anything else, Rich?
Yeah, I think it makes sense to go through what Mr. Sullivan has.
Sure.
Gary, I believe Gary's online.
Is this for the 817 letter now?
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Yeah.
Just identify.
What Tim is referencing, the two weeks, that's, you know, that was something he and I worked out. I don't think this is the current complaint that spurred this cease and desist. I don't know much of the details about the complaint from me, but I just kind of, trying to do my best to give a timeline of, you know, scale, sense of scale, you know, where I think what is clearly agricultural versus what is purely commercial. So I can answer any questions. Just trying to be helpful.
Gary Sullivan speaking, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, Gary Sullivan, 6 Berry Lane.
So the complaint that went into the building department that precipitated the enforcement action was not from Mr. Sullivan. It was from... No, it was not Mr. McCaffrey either. It's actually, oh.
Curly. John Curly?
Curly, correct, yes.
Are there any other, is there any other correspondence from anybody else who's not here tonight? Otherwise, I'll just open it up.
The only one, is Mr. McCaffrey in the room?
He's on the line.
He's online.
I'm on the line here.
Okay, so I'll open it up to anybody on Zoom or anybody in the audience who'd like to. Just, I asked that you asked your questions through the board, comments through the board, and we'll get, we'll try to get the answers for you. So if you're, if you're here and you have concerns, just identify yourself. There's a microphone here for the recording, and we'll be happy to hear from you.
Let Mike speak first.
Sure. Mike, are you on Zoom? Would you like to address us first? Mike McCaffrey?
Yeah, this is Mike McCaffrey. I'm not sure that I have much to add. I will note that, that this is not just a recent issue that complaints about this situation go back at least 20 years. I think if the town looks through its records, you'll find that, that you have issued cease and desist orders at this property as far back as 20 years ago. And I think over time, it's, it's just been an increasingly growing operation and a bigger nuisance. That's all I'll say.
Thank you. Anybody else?
This is Gary Sullivan, 6 Berry Lane. I can add to that just a little bit. You know, as you've mentioned, my property is one that kind of butts directly, you know, the main operation that Tim has going on there. Well, John and Tim have been amicable neighbors, right? We, you know, I've never called anything in. We've always been able to work stuff out. Since about 2014, when I bought the property, you know, the scale has grown considerably. And I'm very empathetic towards, you know, the help that Tim gives John. And, you know, I think that, that the farm is an important part of this area of Norfolk. I'm just having trouble trying to connect the dots between the amount of incoming and outgoing truck trips and this being agricultural at whatever the parameter is, 50%, whatever he's going to say. That just, you know, that's not really what I see. I don't get to see everything. You know, was mentioned that maybe it seems like these complaints are coming more often in the last couple of years. And a really good reason for that is I travel for work. I work in Boston. My wife works in Boston. We travel a lot for vacation. We've been home a lot, you know. We've noticed a lot more. And so, you know, just because we weren't noticing it before doesn't mean it wasn't happening. It just means we weren't noticing it because we simply weren't home.
So Gary, let me ask you. When you say you've noticed a change in scale, exactly what? Is it truckloads? Is it screening? Is it, can you?
If I had to break it down, it would be general size of the area being used, right? When I first moved in, you know, let's take my kitchen window as a point of reference. I look back out my kitchen window. I'm kind of looking to the left of the barn. When I first bought the property, we could kind of in the corner, off to the left, the property, front of my kitchen window. You know, that doesn't mean anything nefarious. That just means the scale has clearly increased. You can see that in satellite images. I'll work for it however which way you want to figure that one out. The amount of activity, the noise, the screening, you know, screening's a thing that's done, right? You know, not going to go out there and yell just because a bunch of rocks got dropped in the screener. It happens, you know. It's something that we were okay with, assuming it was part of the farm. Screening the last two or three years has been more constant. And, you know, this past year, like Tim already mentioned, you know, he had to get through a ginormous, ginormous pile. And that's when I went over there to talk to him and said, "Hey, you know, this really can't work this way. It's just too much." And maybe that amount of dirt is purely agricultural. That would be surprising to me. The water issues, you know, we just kind of mentioned in previous piece of this call that, you know, stone has been put down. It's really helped to mitigate the rush of water that comes down. But there's still a ton of, you know, where's this, where's the dirt from the fields going? It's in my catch basin. It's in my retention pond. I dredge it. It's not the worst thing to do. It's not the worst thing that can happen, but it sure is messy. And that's another thing that's just seemingly due to scale, getting worse.
Okay, thank you. So, so the appellant, is that a fair representation that the project has, or the operation has grown in scale over the past 20 years and it kind of became heightened over the last?
It hasn't grown, well, because it stocked up, because there was so much and you couldn't screen it. It was so wet, yes. But now it's down, there's hardly anything there. I mean, there's a loom pile there that we're going to use in the field. But there's, if you look on the ground, we haven't even hauled anything in.
Anybody else like to address the board? Please.
Identify yourself, please.
Hello, Board. My name is Pete Run. I come here today to talk about the huge commercial activity that's really going on at this property. We moved in about nine years ago, and at the time, we thought the noise was from the Fox Run, huge construction project that has gone on behind this farm and our properties. And as that dwindled and went down, we realized the sound will myself and the neighbors have taken. It's like living on Logan Airport. When they talk about farming, I love farming. I wish I was a farmer myself. I wish I could farm. One of the reasons I moved to this community was the farming. We're not talking about that today. What we're talking about is the commercial activity that has steadily grown based on what Miles is doing on this property. This is not a farm problem. This is a commercial problem that is growing. And screening the loom is a nice way of saying they're taking all the rocks from all the properties that they're doing the septic systems on, bringing them to this property and rolling them through a large diesel machine that is constantly running. It's running in the morning. It's running in the afternoon. Like some of the other people, I do work from home now. I am on conference calls and people are asking me. And I live across the street in the circle. It's coming from Gary's house through all over to the other side. So this is not a one-time thing. This is not, this is a problem, but just deal with it. This is a growing concern for all of the neighbors and especially the children who live in this community and on the street. We have a couple of houses with grandchildren that like to play in the street. My son, some of the other sons, too. These kids are saying it, too, and they're riding their bikes in the circle. There's other concerns here than, okay, this is a farm. Let's let them do the farming. This is a big, this is a big issue for the people of this community.
Did you, did you state your address?
I'm at 5 Berry Lane, across the circle.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tim, Christopher Weeder, 64 Cleveland Street. Can I say zoning board emeritus chairman?
Of course.
Rich, thank you for correcting the cubic yards of dirt. You were getting ready for an email tomorrow. You know, I just want to remind people, and I think Joe was the only one on the board at the time, run and gun. A lot of people knew about running gun. And the big complaint was the noise, gunshots. And there was many years, a lot of legal fees from the town, dealing with this issue. At the end of the day, it was considered agricultural. The agricultural bylaws, the right to farm, are very broad. If you look at case study, you'll find 50% in favor, 50% against. It is very, very broad. It leaves a lot of leeway. And I think people have to remember, we come here to Norfolk because you all like the rule of nature. And during the run and gun, I made the comment, isn't it nice to have your kids sit on ponies? Isn't it nice to have them walk in the farm maze? Isn't it nice to take pictures of pumpkins? But at the end of the day, not in my backyard. And I can understand where people are concerned about the commercial use. I think what you can do, and I think we did it during run and gun, and I think the chairman might be familiar, and I know Rich is, is you can put conditions on whatever the operation is. In other words, the board can rule it agricultural under the exemption and say screening can only be done on Fridays between 9:00 and 3:00. They can put conditions on the trucks. So you're allowed to do that as well, as well as granting or denying the appeal. But I just remind people that, you know, we do allow farming. Remember, if the operation isn't up there, if the farmer who is at 115 Park Street doesn't receive this help, do we want to see, like Cleveland Street, where we took a pig farm because no one liked it? And we now have 40, 40B units? So be careful when you want to get rid of an operation and you want to hurt a farmer, because he is getting some help. What else will and can be put there? And I don't want to use it as a threat. But, you know, you could end up with a 40B, you know, in this day and age where everybody is going green. You know, swine farms, and I think that property 40 years ago actually had swine on it. A swine farm could develop. A chicken farm could develop. And if you want to compete with David Axberg, you could raise cattle. But just remind everybody of that. I think the agricultural laws are pretty broad. It's, soil and tilling is definitely included, but just be careful. Because I think you can, you can go down a slippery slope. And I think the board, and I think it sounds like the appellant are willing to work to try to make this work for everybody. And you do have the right to put a number of conditions on this if you so choose. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for hearing me.
Thank you.
I would just, as a board member, briefly like to state that affordable housing and 40B development as a threat is a fair housing issue. And so just as a board member, I'd like to call attention to that comment and that specific issue. Just that we, that comment does not necessarily reflect the opinion of this board.
I wasn't, ma'am, I wasn't assuming that.
I know, I know. It's just, it's safekeeping for legal purposes.
I know you're new in town two years, so you haven't been through the 40B cycle. So please understand that many of us who have lived here have lived through the 40B cycle here.
I would counsel you to look at the other towns who have been litigated against because comments like that one that you made passed without comment from the board. That is the only thing that I am saying.
I was giving my personal opinion.
And I was commenting just that it's not reflective. That's all. It's just safekeeping.
I never assumed it was the opinion of the board, ma'am.
Just so.
Welcome to Norfolk.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Courtney.
I have another question.
Go right ahead, David.
So in the two weeks that you were screening, how many, how many?
Low. It was full of leaves and manure and sheen, so it so... Flip it, would flip the pile, would work the pile just to get air into it. So you'd get hardly anything. Some days, you'd hit a dry spot. You'd blow through. You could do probably 100 yards in a day.
So is it wet because there was some piles?
No, it was wet because the year before it rained and we kept pushing it together.
Oh, so it's compacted on the property?
So I kept pushing it. So then there was gravel in it, too. So it got like...
Clay.
No, it got like pockets of water in it. And you'd hit it and water would run out of the pile. Since the subdivision that somebody mentioned up in the back, since they did that, the water, the town's been up there. The water that comes down off that through the farm is amazing. It's washed, I had the driveway paved, and it's washing through the driveway, pushing the asphalt out and causing big creations because there's so much water coming through. A lot of it goes down to Park Street.
Is there anybody from the public who could just help me out a little bit, or more recent history of last 30, 60, 90 days of the activity up there? Has it changed? Is it, is it under control? Is it the same as it's been? Is it problematic? I'm just trying to get a scope of where we are.
This is Gary Sullivan. It stopped. It stopped because cease and desist. I mean, it's been, it's been quiet.
So up until that point, was it, up until that point, it was heavy?
It was, it was heavy, yeah. I mean, it's daily, you know, in, you know, in all fairness to Tim and John, it's no earlier than 7:00 and no later than 3:00. You know, the timing of it is, like I said, they're usually pretty good to work with. The timing of it isn't an issue. You know, the screener goes on and it's on. Maybe it goes off for lunch.
Yep.
And then it's back on all day. So, you know, there's activity there.
So it was consistently, it was consistent up until the time of the cease and desist, basically?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm confused. Were you screening for 10 days this year, 10 days straight, or are you screening on a regular basis?
We screened 10 days straight, and we just cleaned everything up. I mean, there was a big pile there.
But you're not doing more screening? You're done for the year on screening?
We're done for now.
Okay.
So if this cease and desist order hadn't been issued, where would you be on your operations going forward?
We were done screening. We did it all.
For the year?
It's done. There might be four loads on the ground now that needs to be screened. It's done.
What, what do you consider a load?
18 yards, maybe?
Okay, so eight, so, okay, so you have, you still have 200 yards to screen?
No. There's probably four or five loads. So what's that say? That we'll run it to 20. There's less than 100 yards there.
And how big is that pile compared to the pile you did?
Oh, it's, it's nothing.
And is this pile drier?
That's my point. You did that in 10, you did, you just told me you did 10 yards in a day.
And some days, we did 10 yards a day.
In the other days, how many did you do?
Some days, you'd do 100.
Okay.
Depended on the dryness, because it will blind the screens. And you think that a trommel with the brushes? I just screened for the town and Medway with a trommel screener. The brushes wouldn't even clean the screens. It was all leaves. And it just packs in there. And then you have to beat it and you have to drop rocks in it to clean the screens out.
I want to move this forward a little bit, and we do have another applicant that we're late for. So I, real quickly, does anybody else in the public that would like to address this on the? Has anything?
Kate Redden. I live at 5 Berry Lane with Pete Redden, across the street from the Sullivans. So we bought our house in the fall of 2013. We actually toured the Sullivan at the time and told there was a farm behind there, so we checked that out. You could see it. Certainly not massive piles of anything at that point in time. Since that time, we've been over in the backyard of the Sullivans. We've been able to see the piles that are ginormous mountains that have grown over the years. I work from home. It is constantly noisy. The one thing that hasn't been mentioned is the huge banging that happens all day long. I don't know what they do with the trucks, but it sounds like they're banging the beds, trying to get stuff out of them. When that happens, it is incredibly loud, and the people that I'm on conference calls with at work now joke about it because they can hear it. And my house shakes. All the china in my cabinet shakes. My entire house shakes. I'm pretty sure it's not good for my foundation. We just actually had two cracks fixed this past year. Not saying it's from that specifically, but I can tell you that my house shakes when they do the banging. The amount of noise, as my husband mentioned, we thought it was from the Fox Run development. Then we kept driving around, realized that was done. Then we kept driving around, realized that was done, but this noise was still incessant. And we didn't know where it was coming from. It's coming from the farm. We have zero issue with farming, none, none at all. It's the construction part of it. It's the loud noises, it's the banging, it's the fact that my house is shaking. I'm trying to work from home and it sounds like I'm working at a construction site. I don't mind listening to a tractor every now and then, I don't mind farming, not one bit. Wouldn't even mind listening to cows. I love the sound of cows. I just, it's the construction. It's gotten a lot worse over the years, it's built up. At one point, a couple of years ago in the fall, there was burning being done. I actually thought the Sullivan's house was on fire. They weren't home at the time, but I looked out and the flames were above their roof line. And I asked if they were home. I ran over and realized it wasn't their house on fire. In fact, it was burning being done at the farm behind their house. So this is, it's just, it's building. It's not what it was when we moved in. It's just steadily building and we're just concerned that it's going to continue to build. So whatever agreement we can come to would be great. Again, we have nothing against farming. We have nothing against somebody helping out a farmer, certainly not by any means. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's nobody else, what I, what I'm inclined to do is encourage that we continue this hearing, because we've been on it for almost an hour now. And, but maybe during, maybe up until the next hearing, I'd encourage the appellant maybe to suggest to the board some conditions that we could look at and review and talk about things like that that may help the board and may help, and may alleviate the neighbors' concerns. I'd encourage that.
Is that something you'd want in writing before the next hearing? Or something you want us to suggest now or?
I think if you put it in writing before the next hearing.
Okay.
We'd have a chance to review it, we can have you back, everybody can come back, we'll keep the hearing open. Everyone who hasn't an opportunity tonight, we can address it then. We have a lot of information tonight, we will expect more the next hearing.
Ask Rich, is that okay? That we extend it to another date?
We certainly could.
September 21st.
You can certainly continue it to September 21st.
Okay.
I'm not, I know I've been here a while, but I haven't, I wasn't here for the run and gun, so I'm not too, I have to get myself back up to speed in terms of that. So I'm not sure the.
Yep.
In terms of conditioning that one.
I understand, yep.
But.
So our next, our next hearing.
And you do the homework on that.
A little odds and condition of appeal.
It's, it's a fun one. I was involved in it.
Meanwhile, it gives us a chance to do what you're saying, some homework. They could propose some conditions and we could review that. It may need further discussion, but.
Gives council, it's lined an opportunity to, to continue the discussion and offer conditions that they'd be willing to accept. It may not be something we do or don't do, or may add on to it, we don't know yet, but I think it's, I think it's a good use of time.
We agree, and the 21st is absolutely.
And this way, everybody in the public, you have an opportunity to come back and speak and send in your correspondence. I'd certainly encourage that. So I entertain a motion to continue the hearing.
What time on 21st?
Don't think we have anything scheduled yet, so you could start right at seven with this.
All right, I make a motion, we continue this hearing for 115 Park Street, September 21st at 7:00 PM.
It's fine with me. I'll second it.
Second? Any discussion, all those in favor? Aye, aye.
Aye.
Sorry, I should have asked this before.
Aye!
Good, thanks.
Chris McF, aye.
Thank you.
Between now and then, is there an opportunity to visit the property? We have not been on the property, so in terms of, is that allowed?
Would you like us to come out and visit your property?
Sure.
Well, technically it's not his property, so.
No. Would that be all right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
But I think if we're going to do that as a group, we'd have to schedule a hearing.
Yeah, we mean, I just, I've never been, I haven't been on the property, so I just, so I'm not familiar with like just the way the land.
As a board, we'd have to schedule.
You have to schedule it, right, yes.
Right, but it could still be scheduled before the 21st.
Okay.
Right, you just schedule a date and post it, right?
Yeah.
And then the public would be aware of that.
Yeah, just to be advised.
Yeah, no, we just would post it as you normally.
We figured out to do it right in the middle of all this.
Give everybody an opportunity who wants to attend a site visit if we can coordinate.
I'd say we pick a date tonight and post it right away, because we only have two weeks to post it.
Okay.
And we could still have that before the next hearing.
No, 48 hours, I mean.
Before the next hearing, the visit, right?
For the site visit.
The posting, you need two weeks to post it.
The site visit's interesting because you don't take testimony. And so I think that's just the 48-hour window on that with a public posting.
Yeah, that's all you're doing.
All right, just checking, it'll lay in for two weeks.
No, because it doesn't, you don't have to run that one, it doesn't have to run a notice in the paper for the site visit.
Right, we're not making it a public site visit.
No, it's not public.
Well, it's, it's public, the public can attend, but we don't take any, we don't take testimony, so it's not a public meeting. It's a site visit.
Generally, because of work schedules and things like that, is, are early evenings generally available? Or you guys, we still have daylight? So why don't we work towards a?
Yeah, let's, well, let me, unless you all know your schedule, I don't know if everybody knows.
Why don't we work towards a day?
Yeah.
We're getting a positive nod here that early evenings could work, I don't know, people's weekends, but during the work week seems to be best for people, especially this time either trying to get their last weekends in.
Yeah.
Out of town. We still have some daylight, so we can work towards that. And that would be, everyone, it would be a public notice, so the public could attend, if we can coordinate that.
Is that all right?
That's fine.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good evening. Thank you.
And the motion was eight and seconded.
Thank you very much for your time, that was.
Did you want to pick a time though, was there more time?
Yeah, I just, I'm for the forward, can we, I'd like, any Monday, Wednesday, Friday.
No, I mean for the, did you say seven o'clock?
I already said that already.
You already took that.
I want to make sure we took care of, all right.
I didn't talk about the site visit until after, sorry.
We can do the site visit later, all right.
If there's a more complete record with the building department, there's, that people have said that there's one or a complaint two years ago, could we get any information? And 20, that, because the 22 years is an important number? It would be interesting to see how far back the correspondence goes.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Are we ready for the next hearing?
Yes, we are, we have a, we're late for our next meeting.
All right, let me read the notice of hearing. Notice hereby given according to Chapter 48 of Massachusetts General Laws and any and all amendments thereto, that a public hearing will be held by the Zoning Board of Appeals in room 124 at the Norfolk Public Municipal Building on Wednesday, August 24th, 2022 for the following application. Mary Ann Pine, at 7:10 PM, has requested a variance according to Massachusetts General Laws 4A, Section 10, and Town Bylaws E1A, E1B, E1C 4. Subdivide the lot to reduce the diameter of a required circle from 200 feet to 178 feet on Lot 2A of the plan. The property is located at 55 Noon Hill Avenue.
Mary actually, Pine, one chair, two leaning, happy to be here, if I may.
Good.
So the applicant's requesting a variance here. So just by way of history and to tie into the prior hearing, this is the original farmhouse for the farm that covered all of land back there where Noon Hill Ave is now. What is left of it is shown here. And Betsy and her husband purchased that in June of 1972, excuse me, August. The deed was quoted, August 29th of 1972. So that's coming up on a few days of 50 years anniversary. And then a few years later, in June of 1976, they acquired this lot when the subdivision was put in, which at the time was a buildable lot. Over those years, they've paid taxes on both these, obviously this has the home on it, but they've paid tax on this as a buildable lot. They did take title to both in their names. It was sort of, they just did it as an investment for their, for their future. But over time, two things changed. The minimum lot size went up to 55,000 square feet. And then the required circle portion of the bylaw came into existence as well. So what that meant is the home that they purchased in 1972 became non-conforming because it had less than 55,000 square feet. This that you're seeing here comprises the proposed new lot. And with the required circle, the lot here now failed to satisfy the required circle, even though it had a significant amount of square footage and plenty of frontage. So the, just to take you through the specific zoning criteria, that, the first criteria is that owing to circumstances relating to soil condition, shape or topography. Well, we certainly have a uniquely shaped, sort of banana-shaped lot, which is unique to this lot, which is not something that's in the zone. And so I think that satisfies criteria number one. And the second is that hardship is created by the unique shapes, it has to be related to that. And the hardship would be that number one, it's been taxed as a buildable lot for 40, no, yeah, for 46 years or so. And the other would be to deprive Betsy now of a buildable lot would certainly be a significant financial harm to her. And then interestingly, and I think very compellingly, the third criteria would be that you could grant relief without substantially derogating from the purpose of intent or intent of the bylaw. Actually, you're going to further the interest of the bylaw if you grant the relief, because what you have now are two non-conforming lots. If you were to grant the relief of the 22 feet for the required circle, because they have a 178-foot circle rather than a 200-foot circle. And if, if you were to grant the relief that Betsy's seeking, the result would be you would have a fully compliant lot. So you, so one lot would be compliant and the non-compliant lot would be made more conforming. So you go from two non-conforming lots to one conforming, and the other would be more conforming. So it certainly doesn't derogate from the intent of the bylaw, it is in furtherance of the intent of the bylaw, which is to have sort of uniformly shaped lots of a minimum size, so you don't have sort of narrow areas with big balloons in back, that sort of. Furthering the. I think, given the history of the lot, given the financial impact on Betsy, given the unique shape, and the fact that the end result will be to this lot conforming, to improve the non-conformity of this lot, we would respectfully request the relief.
Thank you.
I'm not clear why the first lot became non-conforming.
Is that because of the setback? On the, on the existing house, is that the only non-conformity?
No, it's when.
You said there was a bylaw.
They're in, well, they're in common ownership. So when Betsy wanted to convey off the other lot, she couldn't leave her lot that she has currently as non-conforming.
So that was lot size?
Lot size, exactly. It had approximately 45,000 square feet.
Right, but that was always a lot from day one, right?
That's always been a lot, but her and her husband purchased the other lot. The title merged. Therefore, I think what council's saying is to create this now, they're expanding the lot size, so it now conforms to today's zoning.
Exactly right.
The only, the only issue I think is, the only reason for the relief, I think, is the diameter circle on opposed 2A is 178 feet.
Right.
As opposed to 200.
But that was a buildable lot when they purchased it.
Correct.
So why does it become unbuildable now?
I think it's the circle.
No, because, because, because in reality, when the same person owns two lots next to each other, it becomes one lot. So they have to re-subdivide it into today's.
So when they purchased it, it became one lot?
That's correct.
They merge when you have.
They merge.
They merge when you have to cure a zoning violation, basically. And so if the bylaw changed, but they are both buildable, so I would think that the only reason that you have, you're here today is because of the circle, because you would have no problem with, you know, the substandard lot and the oversized lot to convey the oversized, were it not for the circle, they need the space.
Right, but I'm not sure it even merged, because there's already an existing house out there. But that's a little bit different argument.
Yeah, it's still.
I don't think it merged.
Because they have the right not to.
There's not, there's not an existing.
There's only an existing house on CCONC.
Right, correct.
So I really think it's only the radius, if the radius weren't adopted, they'd never need to see us here.
You don't, you're not going to disagree with me, I think it's.
I don't disagree, but the building commissioner disagrees. And so that was the feedback that Betsy got, and hey, you can't leave 187 CCONC as a substandard lot, because it has to be now, because it's all now one lot, that has to be a minimum lot size of 55,000.
Once you move a lot line, that would be true. And you'd have to move it to get the radius, because otherwise you see the little dashy line where the existing lines are. So they got to move it, and once you move it, then they have to be.
And in reality, that lot line technically doesn't exist because it's all one big lot.
It does and it doesn't.
Well, it's, right, but it, but in reality, it was a conforming lot as a single lot, because it fits.
As a, as a, as a single lot, correct.
It, it's conforming. You can't make it a non-conforming lot by trying to break off a second lot.
Well, they have the second lot, but they can't build on the second lot because of the circle. So in order to make it buildable again.
So the only, the only thing in question is the new lot that they're annexing off of the old lot.
Correct.
Has to have a circle.
But they're creating different lot sizes here, right?
But both of the lot sizes now will be conforming because they're forced trading one for the other with that little corner.
The only relief they're asking for is for the circle.
The radius, yeah.
22 feet on the radius.
Was there a build factor calculated, did we need that? A build factor?
I don't know what that means.
What would be improving the build factor in any event?
That, yeah, that's what I'm thinking, but I just didn't, I didn't know if you weren't.
The build factor deals with the shape, similar, it's a shape issue with a lot.
It's not going to be an issue by the eyeball, it's not going to be an issue for you, but I didn't know if the building department would want that on there. So if you, if you were to build on the new lot, Lot 2A. So I'm assuming there's been some look at where you could position a house and meet setbacks and so forth.
Exactly, yeah.
And I don't know if there's well water there, I don't know.
It's a, it's a, it's a huge lot, there's plenty of space.
You can fit everything out there without further relief.
Exactly, and, and it would come right off of Noon Hill Ave.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's a beautiful location, I drove out the other night.
I think it would make, I think it would make the neighborhood.
They purchased it.
Zoning changed.
Grandfather come into play, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
You're correct, but it gets convoluted because they had the abutting lot. So then there's an argument of merger.
Because once, because once this, the circle is the complicating factor because it comes after it, because the lot is legally buildable technically, but it's not dimensionally because of the circle, which is why they.
But they didn't know next door, they probably wouldn't have this issue.
But because they merged the lots, did they merge the lots under like the tax law and everything? Is that what happened?
No, it's.
It's been a separate lot, paid for separately.
Yeah, it's just an abstract concept.
Okay.
For zoning.
No, I understand.
But I really go back to if it was.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense.
If it's been treated as a separate lot all this time, buildable before, buildable and purchased before any bylaw change, why isn't it being handled as just a non-conforming lot of some sort that it can be built upon?
Because the new structure has to be conforming to current zoning and the new structure would be subject to the.
Didn't have an existing structure before, is it that type of thing?
If they already had a house on this lot, we wouldn't be here tonight. We'd just have two kind of odd lots and be on our merry way. But because they didn't build on the lot back in the 70s when they purchased it, they now have this complicating factor from zoning that was adopted after the fact that would apply to the structure in addition to the lot.
So the buildable status changed over?
Buildable status does change when you change the zoning, depending on what you do with it. And so this was kind of an, probably, because the 200-foot radius, I don't know what the lineage is on that, but that's kind of a down zoning thing, if you do a square or a circle, it doesn't really matter what shape, it's just one of those density things, and so.
I'm not sure that we'd even have this issue if they didn't leave next door.
Yeah, because otherwise there would never have been a lot to merge with it. They would have a substandard lot and.
They're making a change to the first lot, is that what they're doing?
They have to.
They're making the first lot conform, the, the.
I think there's a.
It lacked square footage, it's going to meet today's zoning.
Yeah, and I think there's a, I think there's actually something here that maybe the assessors need to take note of, is if we're going to go down this road and say that that's not a buildable lot, but we've been billing as a buildable lot for years, I think the assessors need to take a look at all those in Norfolk, because that's not right, especially if they're not conforming now. And if they've been merged, now treat it as a merged lot. Get taxed as a merged lot, go through this process somewhere down the road, fine, but in reality, as a buildable lot, it was a buildable lot before you came even in.
I think people have the right to file for an abatement, but they're afraid to do that, because then they say, geez, here I am arguing that it's nonbuildable, and then I want to come back someday and build on it. So I think they're hesitant to do that.
No, I hear you. But it, to me, that's, that's, that's kind of wrong. It's almost like a town double dipping in reality, because you're, we're asking you to pay taxes on it for 50 years as a buildable lot, but now we're telling you it's not a buildable lot, even though it is, because that's what we billed you as.
I think from a variance perspective, it's easy enough to say that this is a unique condition related to the shape of the lot. You would not have this condition were it not for the shape of the lot, and this is a unique shape of the lot for the zoning district itself.
Yeah. Yeah, we're trying to take the path of least resistance.
That has very little resistance in my mind.
Thank you. Is there anybody from the public who would like to close this?
I'm Catherine Mayo at 53 Noon Hill. So our property abuts 2A on that long side.
Okay.
And I am in full support of Betsy.
Is there anybody else on Zoom or in the public that has any questions or concerns? Anything else from the board?
I'd just like to make sure we understand that there is no way this property can be built upon without a variance.
That's what the building.
Well, they think they've applied for the building department and.
There's a number of ways to skin a cat, so, I mean, you, this board has the authority and the leeway to make a finding that no merger has taken place. If you were to do that, then we have a pre-existing lot at 2A that's a grandfathered lot, and then we wouldn't need relief. But.
Make that finding, we'd have to do a little more research.
Yeah, I, that's what I, I think it's more convoluted. What we've tried to present to the board, what we see is the most logical, simple approach, which is to make 187 CCONC conform, and then to decrease the nonconformity at 55 Noon Hill, so that the outcome is you have, instead of two nonconforming lots, you have a conforming lot and a more conforming lot.
Yeah. I think that when the relief is for the diameter circle, you can help me out with this, Courtney or Rich or somebody, is that generally, it avoids really, but also, if they can meet their frontage and their setbacks, and they're at a 170-feet circle, I don't see really any derivation, other than it's just a technical circle on a plant.
I don't think.
It'll fit in nicely with the neighborhood, and you'll never feel that it's an odd configuration.
No, I agree that it's a place that looks like it deserves the building, how, I'm just concerned about us having to do the variance.
I understand. Go right ahead, Chris.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. When did, I don't know if you, I don't know if you recall, do we know, and maybe Rich does, when we changed the circle? Was that?
I asked that question. We last sat the other day, and I thought you want to take a look at Noon Hill.
It was a while ago, Chris.
I don't know off the top of my head.
It was after 76.
I think it was the 90s.
I think it was the mid 90s.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought it up.
Mid 90s? I was almost thinking it was back mid 80s, because we put the development in on the 12 houses on Brookside, and I'm pretty sure we had to adhere to the circle.
Was it a smaller circle, or was it this size?
That I don't know, but I'm pretty sure the circles were there when we put the houses in.
The second circle is 178, so it's.
Two, two, so it's 22 feet shy.
That's it?
Yep.
But I think the issue is really, whenever the circle changed or didn't change, if I'm wrong, you still have a merger issue.
Yeah.
So it's not one lot pre-existing, it's.
I think it's cleaner to find on the, on the lot size.
Yeah.
You may also, Mr. Chair.
There's the lot shape, the hardship created by the lot.
You may also, I think that, and actually Attorney Cannon may remember, there is some case study that I think supports what Mr. Cannon has been saying in town, and Joe, you should know it. And I think it was off for Pacilla. It was probably about seven years ago, Rich. You may want to look at that. And, but there was a case where it actually was, both lots were granted, you know, even though at the same time, we were talking the merger doctrine, but they did grant it. And actually, the zoning board denied it. It went to Superior Court, and it was reversed. You might be right. I know it eventually was reversed from what the zoning board said.
Two cases coming out of Norfolk on road to our deal left.
Might give you some guidance, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from anybody on the board or from the public?
Hi, I'm Betsy Klein. I just say I've been paying taxes on this land since 1977, and it's nine. Years and years and years. So the town has been telling me that it's a buildable lot all that time.
Yeah, as we acknowledged earlier.
Right. Thank you. Anything else?
I, as a homeowner in Norfolk, I'm sorry you had to do that, because that's not, I don't know if that's right. You have two lots that have been supposedly merged together. You got one lot. Now you had to pay an engineer to come out and separate it again. You're getting, you're getting charged all over the place to get a buildable lot, which, needless to say, since 1975, it's gone up in value. So, I mean, it is definitely, you know, it's a valuable lot, especially at the opening of Noon Hill, so.
Well, if it's buildable.
It is.
Correct.
It is.
All right, so anything else? You have a motion to close the hearing?
Rich has a comment.
Go right ahead, Rich.
The suggestion is we keep it open, and then we can come back with a draft decision. I want to foreclose out the public hearing. There's some things that have been discussed, but it wouldn't be bad to.
Keep the hearing open, though.
Yeah, keep the hearing open, so that you can read about that previous case, and generally, my thought in this topic is maybe in better practice would be we keep the public hearing, get a flavor of the board if you're inclined to grant something, and then close it. So if you want to take information in, we can do that, because a couple of things have been asked.
What's the pleasure of the board? Does the board want to keep it open and continue to the next hearing?
I mean, I would draft the decision. I'm just saying that, but.
Next hearing, if there's no new information, are we comfortable with everything? We can close it and vote it that night.
Just the one month, just keep it open.
I'm not asking for any new information from the applicant, so.
Thoughts?
They've answered all our questions. They've answered my questions.
Good.
Right, so we have.
I don't know what the difference is between closing or opening.
I think he's just suggesting to look at some of the.
Well, the thing, keep it open if you're taking in new information, so.
Well, we can't, if we close the hearing, which is fine, we just can't take on new information. If we keep, if we keep it open to the next hearing, if there's something you want to review, some case history or whatever.
We'll review Pacilla, for example.
Yeah, we can, and we can then consider it. If we close the hearing, we can't consider that information.
I'll just go on the record, say I'm in favor that we find the path that helps her build her, building this property.
I get that sense, so I'm thinking, why don't we just close the hearing and.
That's what I was kind of thinking.
I hate to find something that would work against her.
Would we be comfortable making a decision tonight?
No, we don't do any decisions.
I mean, we, I'm just saying.
We have time to draft a decision.
We have time, but.
We deliberate, too.
Just saying, does anybody feel like they need more information? I guess that's another way of putting it.
I don't need any more information.
All right, so proposing also. I got a proposal also.
That's fine.
You can close the public hearing, if you'd like to.
Sure.
And I'll put it on the agenda, that previous case, so you can familiarize yourself. It's worthwhile, a refresh.
At the same time, we'll finish.
Not subject to this case, just in general.
At the same time, we'll be deliberating at next meeting, too.
Or tonight?
Because I think they've satisfied their variance argument.
I did.
As far as, you know, this is a hardship due to the shape of the lot.
What do you think, Chris? And Josephine, anything?
Well, we've met tougher, I've seen tougher cases than this, and this seems to be, you know, we've approved it, and this is valid as well.
Are you comfortable with us closing the hearing?
Oh, yes, I do agree.
Okay, so if we can get a motion to close the hearing?
I make a motion to close the hearing, and.
Okay, is there a second?
Yeah, I second it.
Okay.
Chris, make that.
Okay, thank you. All of you say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Enjoy the rest of the summer.
Thanks for hanging in there.
Especially since you're paying taxes on it as a buildable lot.
You guys want to do next? I have right here. Do the town plan updates, or we move on deliberation?
Why don't we, why don't we give Rich an opportunity with town plan updates? If there are any.
Can we have a five-minute?
Oh, sure, we can take a five-minute recess.
Not even a five-minute break.
Sure, we'll take a five-minute recess.
Judge.
Thank you for the break.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're back, it's eight thirty-one, we're back with the August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two ZBA. Our next item is going to be updates from our town plan of Rich McDonald.
Let's see, that's all right. Start with the. So housing production plan, there's a draft that's been circulated to the affordable housing trust, the select board, and the planning board, the planning board has made some comments on it, and the course of action is to have the planning board vote to adopt it on September thirteenth, and then the select board is going to be taking it up on the fourteenth of September to adopt it. Hopefully, both those things occur simultaneously, we've talked to at least Phil DiMartino at Department Housing Community Development, so that way it goes up to them, we can get it, our current plan expires the twelfth of October.
Rich, from a high level, can you just explain for anybody watching what the what the housing production plan is and does and what it's all about generally?
Sure, it's a housing production plan, the best function of it allows you to produce affordable housing at either half percent or one percent for temporary reprieve in terms of forty B, so that's the, so as you, if you have a small, so in our case, that's sixteen dwelling units or thirty-two dwelling units.
So if we demonstrate to the state level that we have a housing production plan is satisfactory, they endorse it.
They'll certify, and then when we just got done, this past July, just a month ago, we came out of it, we had three projects, the Lakeland Hills project, the one ninety-four Main Street, and then Waits Crossing, those projects were previously approved two years prior to that, and so we've got a temporary, we came out of that temporary reprieve, now, we're out of Safe Harbor now, so the door is open, but it's, it sets out goals and objectives that you need to meet that you, that you try to accomplish, they're high level goals, they're not specific goals, but if you don't have a housing production plan, you don't get credit in between.
So out of the forty Bs that have been approved over the last couple of years, I don't know if you know, whether or not any of them want to go forward with construction, if you have any inside knowledge, or talked to developers, or.
Yeah, so the ones I, well, so Lakeland Hills is under construction.
Yeah.
One ninety-four Main Street is being purchased, it's on your.
Right.
It's under correspondence for you to sign off tonight, coincidentally.
Didn't we sign that up already?
There is one other document that you didn't sign off on, so it's before you.
One ninety-four, one ninety-four Mill Street, Main Street is where Bork's Restaurant was?
Correct, yep, where Bork's was.
They have a building permit or no?
No, not yet.
They haven't been approved.
Good.
No.
Okay. So if this is approved on the fourteenth, get a quick turnaround from DHCD, let's say, you know, by October, when they go to pull the building permit, those units could be listed, and if it's more than sixteen, it'll be the year, and if it's more, if it's their units in rental, I don't know if it's rental or owner.
These are ownership, yeah.
Won't get that many then.
Right.
No, yeah.
We need some, we need some rental property.
Right.
Yeah.
I agree, we do.
And then Waits Crossing, the letters going out to the butters are planning to start at least site prepping in October, so.
How many units are at one ninety-four then?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, if it was a rental project, I mean, that's.
Yeah, won't, won't get it.
So that's an interesting point, so we got credit before.
Oh, oh, so have they fallen off yet?
They've fallen off, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Cause there's, there's, you wiggle around a little bit because you can count them as soon as the building permit is issued, but if they're not built within two years, they fall back off of the SHI, and so you sometimes have developments pop on and off.
So in this example, all those I just mentioned, they fell off, so that, so now.
So if you, so if they were, and if they were all rental, when they went to pull it again, we, if they were all rental, it would be enough to get Safe Harbor, but it's not. So it's not.
Yeah, one ninety-four Main Street started as an attempt to be rental, I think, started that way.
It did in its original form, yeah, but so those.
And Waits Crossing again is which one?
It's, it used to be Abbeville, previously.
Right, 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 and what about the one that's down on one fifteen across?
Small one there, yeah.
Small, that, that's being purchased, but I don't have a.
It's changing here, it's changing, isn't it?
That's thirty-five Pine Street.
That's thirty-five Pine Street, yep, that's eight units, but those are.
But you believe those are going forward?
Yeah, no, they're, they're being purchased to go forward to develop, I still on the timeframe on those, last one ninety-four and thirty-five, because the same owner is doing Lakeland Hills, so.
Do you know of any others coming in?
Not as of yet, no, it's been.
Quiet.
Quiet, which is.
They haven't put any foundations in Lakeland Hills yet.
Right. There's a lot of units going off, so there's a lot to absorb.
And my property line, right outside my property line, has gone thirty-five feet high into the air, like, there's no way you can, you can even go across, so, I, I don't know if that's going to come back down or not, but that's crazy, I thought that was unbelievable.
You thinking about opening an amphitheater now?
Well, no, but I was thinking, hey, I could now, but I was thinking originally, I'd put an egg stand out there, but nobody's going to walk down thirty-five feet down a sheer cliff in order to get eggs.
Is that some sort of like conditioning the earth that they're doing, or?
Yeah, I guess, I, I hope they knock it down, I don't know, I thought you weren't supposed to have that much of a difference from the bordering properties.
There should be a, what do you call it, a train plan, right? If we go back in the original.
It'll have a grading plan.
Yeah, there's got to be a grading plan for this.
Yeah.
There's got to be a grading plan, but it's.
Thirty-five feet.
Right now, it's huge.
You're budding really the lot, the lots though themselves, not the road, right, so we have to look at the grading plan, I guess, and see.
Yeah, it's, I mean, I, I'm, I'm off of anything that you guys have to discuss on that one, but I was just, I was just surprised.
Yeah, so anyway, that's the.
Painting structures going in or anything?
No, I'm thinking, I don't even need a fence for my cows, it's that high, they won't go up it.
Second item on the agenda is the master plan, unfortunately, we had a request out in June, we got zero responses, so we just put out another request, just today, actually, we released it today, but what we did do, which we'll see how this goes, is we're, we're phasing it, so we're doing all the visioning, the analysis, and data collection trends, and as kind of phase one of this, and then phase two would be the implementation side of the master plan. Primarily, we're doing it because when we had the article last in the spring, we just had fifty thousand, and this, and forty thousand from the state to do the master plan from the community compact money, and so we're doing, we're doing the phased approach, that way somebody can bid on it, and they're not tied necessarily into phase two, but I put in the capital request to fund phase two, so we can go into, you know, going before town meeting to fund. Ironically, when it was a town meeting, may, they wanted to fund it, it just wasn't in the article, so I think there's probably support to fund it, but from a, you know, from a consultant perspective, it's not money in hand, so.
Right.
We also, we also removed the provision of providing hard copies, so, all right, so everything's electronic, I did get feedback that that was a a legacy of the past, that, you know, the towns, some towns still held on, we had it, we left it, so we moved forward, and then another one that does, can end up as costs, as a production cost, is, is hard copies of the master plan, so we want to, so the, so the way we've put it out this time is it's, it's a searchable document that we'll have electronically, and then when we get to the end, we'll kind of figure out how many we actually need hard copies, but it's not, it's not within the budget for the master plan, it'll be outside that.
Printing a bunch of drafts over and over again.
And then last, maybe most importantly.
The hard copies that are like ten grand if a town wants, between like twenty-five.
They add up quite a bit.
I believe that, I believe that.
And last, maybe most importantly, there's a lot of RFPs out on the street in June, so hopefully, maybe the dust has settled, and, you know, we're in a better spot.
It's a better time.
June is budget season, the fall is great for, great to get your consultants.
And the last time for the master plan was two thousand seven?
Two thousand seven.
Was that a full master plan update, or was it just an update to the nineteen ninety-two plan?
It was an update to the previous plan.
Two thousand seven was truly just an update?
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
This is really, this is a new plan.
Yeah, right, okay.
It's aged out, so, so I'm crossing my fingers, September ninth, so actually, me, two days later, the responses are due on the nineteenth of September. So hopefully, I have good news to report back, we've got some responses, and then last one on there is the zoning bylaws, I know you did comment, Courtney, but the, there was more kind of the, your comments were more not technical necessarily.
I mean, I mostly are comments about conflicts and definitions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we're good, so the, the plan is, the, to put before town meeting in the fall, really, it's, approach is similar what we did the recodification, kind of a bucket, which is insubstantial changes to it, and then more substantial changes, and then, you know, eliminate, you know, five restaurant definitions, that, that's kind of just.
So what we have now is in our zoning bylaw, I think there's at least three sections, if you look at uses.
It's going to be all merged into one table.
You can be all over the board and maybe not consistent, the attempt here is to try to consolidate it, not really change it, to your point, I'm sure there's still a lot of work.
There is work to be done.
There's a lot, I was here the night for the planning board, we didn't do a deep dive, because you'd be there for months on end, but this is a start, I think, at least it's in one spot. To your point, there's going to be a lot of work going forward, but I think the planning board and the commissioner's office, they've done a lot of work to get it to this point, and if they can get this piece done, and through a town meeting, now they have something to focus on and continue to work on, I think, so I don't think the, the proposal is really going to change anything of substance.
No.
Maybe some minor changes or clarification.
But there's some things that we're considering substantive, just to take the edge off in terms of maybe somebody might argue.
Right, so those will be flagged at town meeting, so nothing's, everything's going to be full view, nothing's going to be snuck in there, people will be, you know, advised, this could be a small change. May not be, but it may be.
It may be.
I mean, the changes look mostly benign, I know, when I reviewed, I was only looking for where there's a consolidation occurring, and whether or not that consolidation would create any issues within the definitions, because some of the words are differently defined in the definitions, and then in different subsections, and so there's, so I was doing kind of like a technical review there, whether or not there would be issues in administration and interpretation with consolidation moving forward, because when you tweak the uses, uses tweak without the definitions. I'm doing a, is this a good idea, bad idea review, I was just like, can we administer this moving forward, and I think the answer, I didn't see anything that was like scary, you know? But put it that way, I didn't think anything, you know, I didn't see anything that was scary, I was just looking for definition consistency.
That'll be before town meeting in the fall.
Okay, I do remember the last town meeting, there was this one issue we tried to bring up, at least the bylaw committee was bringing up, was that about the accessory buildings? The difference between a corner lot and a, and a not corner lot, do you remember that one?
Yeah, I do remember that.
Yeah, it was very confusing too, because I, you know, just people in the audience weren't sure what that, what the change was that was being proposed, no change was made, I believe.
Wasn't that sides and rears on corner lots?
Yeah, corner lot had two, two front yards, two backs, right, yeah.
Right, so if you had, if you had a corner lot, you basically have two front yards.
I committed to the planning board to do some further analysis, but it's not going, it won't make the fall.
Right, right, right.
Whether it makes it at all, but we're going to analyze a little.
I guess the issue was.
There's a couple of examples where it came up, but I don't know if it's that large of an issue in town, but that it's.
But if somebody wanted to use their, let's say their house faced one road, but they're, they have another road on the other side, they would be prevented from getting within the setback if it's considered two front yards.
They could maintain two fifty, yeah, two fifty foot.
Or there's been, I don't know, have we granted, I don't know if we've granted such a variance to any of that in the past, doesn't sound like I don't recall any, okay, so I just know it was a, it was a very confusing one, the way it was presented.
Conforming on the corner anyway, so it doesn't matter. I was going to say, why am I twelve feet off of the, off of the.
The other.
Not even, on the Grove side.
That's right, you're on the corner too, aren't you?
There is a zoning change in terms of the B one district, to make a boundary change that abuts the federated church.
Or the fire station.
For the fire station, to remove the necessity of having a, the butt, well, you know, right, so the buffer between the two, so that's for the fall. Make it much more belatable and understandable in GIS, so we'll have it for the planning board.
For some odd reason, if that didn't pass, it would come back to us, I was really of the opinion, there was some other ways to work with it through special permit.
Yeah.
Hopefully, it won't be, be an issue.
Will we be able to, what would be our take on it, if somebody from the ZBA wanted to step up and support it?
Well, I think, I think if you looked at the bylaw, I think if we, it's, the, the way the bylaw was written, it seemed like it was written for that scenario, and I don't have it in front of me, but if we denied it, or even if we denied it, it, it could go to the planning board for a special permit, so they wouldn't have to meet that criteria, it was just an odd.
Yeah, the, you know, it was the, in, in terms of the timing was the issue with, so, we're hoping.
Right, so this is the only dimensional change to the B one district, this is one issue?
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
Yeah, I wonder, I wonder how that's going to be questioned, then, if it's just this one little issue, we better have a good explanation for the change, or supporting issue, we have to have some supporting statements possibly.
We will, I will say this, though, there are exceptions that are within the B one, for example, town hall setback from the street, there's one for the library, you know, there are built-in exceptions, so, you know, if you turn.
I'm not sure what the, what the, what the opposition would be to it.
Yeah.
Right, but if, I need, if, I, I'll talk to you before the hearing at town meeting, but I need to step up for the ZBA and just support it in some way, if there's something I need to say, just in case I feel it's not being discussed in the right direction.
Sure, sure.
Can we footnote the table of demand to public buildings, and then you wouldn't have to do a zoning change, and if we had a future issue with another of the town's buildings, we wouldn't need to go through a convoluted MAD change process?
Had that been discussed before, I, I, I thought I saw something, but I don't know.
The history of the town normally doesn't like the town to have special rights from other businesses, even in the sign, even in the, yeah, but they, they do because of history.
Yeah.
And because of.
So they don't like the idea of that rule?
David, it's, it's a.
It's across the board, you, you know, if you're going to have an electronic sign, allow the donkeys to have an electronic sign, it, it's.
But I see parity in business, I'm just saying, you know.
I, I, I hear what you're saying, but it's also, you know.
It's a bad look.
It's a bad look, it's adhere to your own rules, kind of thing.
Even for public safety.
Well, that was fundamental, yes, and that was fundamental of this whole discussion, debate with this top, you know, so anyway, so hopefully, this cures it, but there is the other option of, of arranging plantings to be done ahead of time.
There's a lot of options there.
Yeah, there, there's options to consider, so that's before, so in terms of, those are the items before town meeting, in terms of zoning.
Thank you.
I forget that they're on remote, did they have any?
Anything else going on at Southwood?
They.
Letter, was it?
I saw one.
They had the public meeting on the phase two on August fourth, comments, I know the PIP group had submitted comments, the twenty, I don't know, let's see, twenty-first, something like, along those lines, so they're still in the assessment phase, they are going to be doing additional, they're going to go out, do some additional testing and finding, so nothing really, they continue on the environmental assessment phase, we are going to be re, so we'll get back in terms of the zoning potential, looking at the zoning down there.
That's the forty R?
The forty R, probably in October, November, somewhere around there.
Okay, so not for this, not for this town?
No, 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 not for this town meeting, that'll, that'll, I mean, there's a very good likelihood that it might be kind of vetted out and maybe perfected, and it's ready to go, but not really brought before town meeting, I, I could see that occurring, right, so here it is, this is it, we're not ready to vote on it yet, I don't know yet, we'll have to see, but definitely not now.
Okay.
Be interesting to do a concept plan for the site as a town, and then make it the developer's problem to do the district, that'd be a beautiful way to do it, it's expensive. I mention it because they're expensive to write, the analysis is expensive, and so if there's a way to punt the cost of it elsewhere for the forty R, that would be cool.
That's if the developer wants to do that.
That's if, there's, yeah, but there's a waste of sweet in that.
Right.
That's on that, so, want to turn back to deliberation of, well, so you have seventy-one Cleveland Street.
Thank you.
Yes, and I went through it, it looks good to me.
I went through it too, and I thought it looked great.
I would agree, Chris and Josephine, have you had a chance to look at the?
The special permit grant decision?
What's the address on that one?
I, I did, you know, I have to say, gentlemen, your volume turned kind of low after the break, I don't know if the cable guy can raise it a little bit, because I'm on the highest tier.
Okay, can you hear us now?
Yeah.
Maybe we're just away from our microphone, okay, thank you, sorry about that, so we're moving on, I don't know if you had a chance to read the proposed decision for the special permit for.
The solar panels at seventy-one Cleveland Street?
Yes, I did, we met once before that already, and I do remember it, yes.
Okay, comments from anybody, Chris?
No, I don't have any comments, I, I read it, it, it's, it's good, it's in good shape.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I want to make a motion, but I also want to ask, do we have to have a formal vote of approval?
Yeah, your vote, yes.
Yes, right, so do we have to do the first to unanimously grant the special permit as a vote?
Unanimous, you know, to grant these.
If it's unanimous.
Right, but same, but normally you would vote.
Can you raise the volume a little bit, folks, so I can hear the prompting, I'm sorry?
I'm just asking if we need to do a separate vote to approve the special permit?
Okay.
You're going to vote that document, which is the decision, which is the approval of it, and you'll do.
But the document says that we've all unanimously.
Well, hopefully, it's unanimous, I mean, presumed if it, if it's not, I'll have.
Editing.
I see your point.
All right, good. So I'm going to make a motion that we accept the decision for the special permit granted for seventy-one Cleveland Street to allow a small-scale, ground-mounted solar photovoltaic array plan in the R three zoning district as written.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
So do roll call.
Aye.
Okay, roll call vote?
Yeah, only because two of them are, if you don't mind.
Okay, Timothy Martin, aye.
David Experg, aye.
Jose Bestiano, aye.
Josephine?
Josephine Kordahay, aye.
And Chris?
Christopher Metcalf, aye.
Thank you. No edits. Thank you.
Hey, Josephine, I'm having no trouble with the the sound level.
You're not?
No, and I'm external, too. So I don't know what your problem.
Minutes, I read those two. Okay, so we have to
I don't know.
Our next line item on the agenda is the the minutes. Everybody have a chance to look at the July twentieth minutes.
Yep.
Good to me.
All right.
I am
Yep.
I did send in a request, an edit.
Okay.
Just because I didn't serve as the chairman of the whole meeting just for the photovoltaic field.
Okay.
That was the only one that I served.
I don't know if you caught that, Elaine?
Yes.
Okay, okay, good.
I just make that change.
So just so you guys know, that was
So do I have to make a motion that acknowledges that edit?
I think the I think it's been edited.
It's been edited.
And you've freshed the
I've heard.
Okay, yeah. So then I make a motion that we approve that we approve the minutes for July twentieth, twenty twenty-two.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
All right, he's going to bring up correspondence.
Yeah, we have two items, one ninety-four Main Street and thirty-five Pine Street.
Okay, more to sign.
For both of them?
Yes.
Okay.
So you want to
Yeah, okay, just pass it along, right?
I think we approved these already, right?
No, something different here.
What is this?
No, it's an acknowledgement. Is this in on the chair, right?
What's it an acknowledgement of?
Is this the acknowledgement of a new developer taking over the project?
It's the acknowledgement of that of what they did sign.
No, so I'll read it. How's that?
Okay.
Want to? Is that easy?
Sure.
All right. So this one's for thirty-five Pine Street. The undersigned being the duly appointed chairman and members of the zoning board of appeals of the town Norfolk, the board hereby acknowledge that after due consideration, developers' request pursuant to the requirement of seven six C M R fifty-six point zero five print section eleven, the board hereby agrees that the foregoing regulatory agreement, including the terms and conditions of the form of affordable housing restriction, affordable monitoring services agreement and the limited dividend monitoring service agreement attached here to satisfy the requirements of the comprehensive permit as defined herein. Without limiting the generality of the foregoing the units in the project required to be affordable and the comprehensive permit shall be affordable and such units are subject to the affordable housing restriction in the form attached to the foregoing regulatory agreement. Any local preference set forth of comprehensive permit shall be implemented only at initial sale of the unit and only to the extent in the compliance with applicable state and federal fair housing rules. And three, compliance with the allowed affordability requirement shall be termed solely by the subsidizing agent as defined seven six C M R fifty-six point zero two under the regulatory agreement using standards of the subsidized agency applicable to comprehensive permit projects and comprehensive plans. In addition, the conflict provisions of the regulatory agreement shall control or any conflict provisions of the comprehensive permit. So you did vote on all this at the last meeting. It's just we didn't have these two.
But we're doing this for both
For thirty-five and
And one ninety-four.
And ninety-four Main, yeah.
Yeah, we kind of listened to the the whole thing for one ninety-four and then we just thirty was pretty much a ditto.
That's right.
Duplicate.
Correct.
And that was reflected in the minutes.
Right. This one doesn't they don't they don't identify each project, though.
You know, yeah, like, how do we know it's unique to one ninety-four, unique to thirty-five? Anything about it? You just need a copy twice.
That was sent to me directly from the
Yeah, somebody drafted it. I mean, it's a
You're going to put this into the package for each one of them, I gather.
It does. It does reference other documents, but there's nothing to identify the project.
Reference in the project.
There's no address on there?
No.
Right, but I have a feeling this is being slipped into each one of them. Because they she's giving it here. This is for thirty-five. That's one ninety-four. They're going to be
Right, there's no
They're going to be assigned accordingly, I gather.
Probably.
Still sketchy.
No, there's no
Yeah, there's no identifying.
Yeah.
No, but even if it was in the pack, it's a fair point.
I'm not a poster. I'm just saying there's nothing to identify it.
No, no, I get I know. Well, do you want
Do you want to retype the first page and identify it? We can come in and sign it?
You can still have Chris and
And they have to sign it anyway.
Right.
Yeah, but then all you guys have to come in. I could just go to my desk.
I live here.
You want to do that?
I'm not actually in this building.
Okay, yeah, we'll wait. You can publish it.
All right.
Okay. Easy enough.